I figured one's is good.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Um, I can tell what you've got in drawing in the picture.
What were you drawing? Oh, you mean the bridge?
The gate, yeah. I thought it was hoping it would be.
Yeah. Okay.
I did go two meters. But I don't know if they all have cameras.
I don't think two meters has a camera.
I think that. What if I suggested it's one long game to hear?
So I probably have to.
It would be better just early.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm thinking is I guess.
Yeah. Instead of seeing a small image of it.
So what time too?
Yeah, exactly.
Is we have to get like a little USB camera.
Okay.
And then they try to go escape those people from this way.
No, you don't need a camera for that or she will see the speaking.
So this is getting there. So this is like five feet. We should be like. It's five feet and we keep how many you want to draw.
That's great. Yeah. This is funny. Yeah.
I'm hoping it looks.
Okay. I don't think it's easy.
And then this is about taking two.
That's true.
A little bit back like.
Okay, there's your room.
So I have to also tell me.
Okay, no, sorry.
I was wondering if I wrote here.
Well, I thought you were gonna say you wrote on.
No, no. I was just wondering what they're gonna do.
Oh, hey, oh, you're doing on that side. Oh, I got you. I got you. I got you. Oh, I see. Some, uh, set back. Oh. Okay, so this gate here is always supposed to. Oh, really? Cause there you see. Okay.
Coming there or just doing some keys or something like that. And then I go.
Yeah.
So it's always five minutes.
Yeah. That's nice.
Or both or both are. I didn't, I didn't. Cause when you do the rail trail, they do that stuff all the time.
Oh, that's interesting.
And when they basically have.
On this, so it's. Step back.
Right.
So you do.
Yeah, I think that's something.
What? Yeah, that's good.
Well, for our, for our just about.
That's good.
Some points as we as a finisher, I watched a video of the fence way off street and the, I know it's put off. Until next time, but when it comes back up, I'd like to.
Well, the turnstile stopped.
I'd like to chat about another possibility since they stopped.
My town was sold in in nineteen eighty-eight.
Okay.
Don't be mad.
It's basically if this is a street, take the hens teeth, stones and turn them.
That's well.
Okay, sorry. Then I'm wrong with well, my understanding, well, but take hen's teeth. Okay, but I don't think it was. You want to think.
Yeah.
Yeah, look at Will and Gate or the Gate Brother. So you turn the, you turn the hen's teeth to one side, you'll set the gate back. You can always have it as being five feet. Goes around the gate. This part here, I'm hoping it's a fourteen or sixteen feet. They can take it on. Oh, I see. Well, there it is. Yeah. So I'm just saying these teeth will take it out and make it frame the end. Okay, and then you can.
Yeah. Cars will pull in.
Is that a road?
They used to come in all the time.
Why is that a road?
I don't know if it's a problem.
It's like any driveway to me or maybe.
Sure.
Anyway, I'm just saying that when I like to give anything special.
Okay, I think we're ready to start the meeting. Everyone, ready to start the meeting?
Hi, Sue.
Okay, first of all, uh, do we have any public comments for, on everything that's allowed on the agenda tonight? Anyone wanna speak publicly on anything? No? In that case, we'll move on to the first item on the agenda, which is safe routes to school.
I do not see the safe routes to school people here, although.
There's no safe routes to school.
They did. Yeah. We're okay. They did tell me that they were coming here, so I would suggest we move on to, Paul is here to give us an update on the Rail Trail Nonprofit.
So we'll, we'll, Paul, we'll, we'll talk about the nonprofit update and if you could, I think you might be, we're, we're sort of like.
I'll stop here.
Before the, before the freezing rain gets to be a quarter of an inch thick outside, so if you could maybe tell us what you had in mind in ten or fifteen minutes, that would be great.
Oh, I, I hope I don't take that long.
Okay.
My name's Paul Penfield. For those of you who don't know it, and I'll talk half to them and half to you if that's all right. My name is Paul Penfield and I've been a member of the Rail Trail Advisory Committee, as you can see, for, for about three years now, since it was originally formed in twenty sixteen. And we've been helping doing the design and the construction of the rail trail during that time, and I think we've been successful in dealing with all the various constituencies. The trail is in and paved almost all the way and everybody seems to like it, people that are trying it. We've built it with, I think, considerable effectiveness with the others in taking into account their desires and wishes. So I think the Rail Trail Committee is going to go down in history as a successful committee, but it will go down because at some point the construction is, will be done. And then you need a different kind of organization. The kind of organization that you want after that is one that ought to be able to be very flexible and nimble in handling what goes on. And as a consequence, a nonprofit, a five oh one C three nonprofit is the right way to go. Almost all rails, rail trails in, in the U.S. and in Canada have their own nonprofits which raise money. They organize volunteers, they run events, they do minor touch-up litter pickup, dog poop pickup, you know? And they have volunteers that, that let people know when there's branches down on the road and somebody has to come in and get them. Where there are unsafe situations or if there's crumbling of the road, they can be on the spot and, and that's why what goes on. So a bunch of volunteers forming a nonprofit is really the right way of doing the, doing the governance of the trail after it's all been built. Now, my own action on the rail trail involved both the, I did, I think, four main things that you may have known about that. One is that I identified and advocated for the preservation of historical assets that are on the trail. And most of you who are members of the Weston Historical Society have gotten this bulletin and in there, half of it, which is the result of the work that I did together with, with Phyllis Halpern and with Rick Conner from Wayland. Half of it is a guide to the various historical artifacts that are there. And this has been very popular and we even made a checklist that you can take your kids along and turn it into a scavenger. I've also been effective in, in dealing with the construction and I represented the town on, on tailgate meetings, which were held every week, every Friday morning at eight o'clock. All the contractors would get together and look over the plans and say, what are we gonna do next? And what does this really mean? Because there are ambiguities in there. And I was there to represent the interests of the town and the town residents. And I think that worked out very well. I also was able to do a decent amount of publicity about the trail. And just recently, this is two weeks ago, my mug is on the front page there and I've had about five or six articles about the trail. Most of them landed on the front page above the fold, which was great. My kids said that when I, when I got my byline above the fold, they said, well, it's just a slow news week in Weston. Well, every week is a slow news week in Weston, so I benefited from that. And, but it's not just a town crier. The Waltham Land Trust has their own vault in which way, that, that's another five oh one C three organization that deals with trails in, in, in Waltham. And in there, I, I've had this article about some of the historical stuff that's been on our trail. So those are the sort of things that I have been doing. But when I looked around and said, what do we need to do next? We gotta form a nonprofit to do the actual governance, to do the trail maintenance and pick up, to run events and to advocate for what we think we need. Talk about amenities that we ought to install, raise money to do it. All these things are things that should be done probably by a nonprofit because it's more effective. They can be more nimble than the town can in spending money and they can get the people who really care about having a picnic table or something to pay for it. Whereas the town would, would log downtown meetings and go through all that kind of stuff. So that's what we want to do. I got together a gang of six and I'll tell you who they are. Uh, I was one of them. Oh, we, we looked around and discovered that the Weston Three Hundred Fund, remember five years ago? We had the celebration of the three hundredth anniversary of Weston. Well, they had a Weston Three Hundred organization and that organization no longer needs their nonprofit. So we decided that we would repurpose it and the people who owned it thought the same thing, that that would be a good idea. So we sort of joined forces with them and we got a gang of six to actually organize the new thing. I'm one of them. Joel Angelillo, who you may have heard of, is one of them. Phyllis Halpern of the Historical Commission is one of them. Who else? Oh, Jim Beams is one of them. Dusty Rhodes, who basically is the best event planner in Eastern Massachusetts by all accounts. She's a member of that group. And Bill Russo is also a member. He's, he's been involved in several nonprofits and organizations in town. Okay, and our present status is that we have some pro bono attorneys that are working for us. And we're now in the process of change, of doing the legal changes necessary to actually change our name. Our new name is gonna be, the, the name of the old organization was the Legacy, what was it? Legacy Trails of, of Weston Three Hundred, something like that. It was, they, they collected money for benches and pavers for the trails, for the legacy trail. Then the legacy trail got changed in location, in size, and it got delayed, but it's finally been designed and it will actually be, be constructed within a year or so to run from the, the Council on Aging up through the Case Estate lands. And there'll be a lot of opportunities to put these benches, but not all the benches. Some of them are gonna go on the rail trail or nearby. So we've got already a joint organization of task force to design where the, where these benches and the pavers are gonna go. But we got good cooperation. Uh, right now, the status of our group is that we're going to do the legal stuff. We're going to solicit volunteers to do various things and I got ideas that I've been thinking of for that. And I come to this group pleading our cooperation and collaboration. And I've been going around to all the various groups in town, both the nonprofits and the government committees, town committees, saying basically, we're the new kid in town. We, we wanna play nice and we do wanna play and we have some expertise about what the trail is all about and we can make it a good asset for the town. We can continue to maintain it, anything that a group of volunteers can do. We want to establish a, a group of volunteers that has enthusiasm to actually follow through on a lot of stuff. And the way of organizing it is to have such a body and we're gonna do it. We want to, we don't wanna take over anybody else's job. We don't wanna compete for scope of that responsibility or money or for personnel or anything. We want to cooperate and we wanna do things together with other organizations. DCR likes the idea. DCR, by the way, owns the trail. Town doesn't own anything. And therefore, everything that we do, we have to clear with DCR. Well, I think we can establish a good relationship with DCR. We have one right now and, and we intend to keep it. And as a result, we will know what's possible to do and what's not possible. And we will implement to the best way that we can the regulations and the rules of the trail and be a spot within town, be an organization which people can turn to if they want to use the trail for some event. If the middle school wants to run a, a five K race, fine, we'll just get out the traffic cones, put them down, use half the road and let the other half be for multiple use. We can do it much easier than the police department can. And another thing that, that we can do, I don't know how many of you have a relative that's in a wheelchair? But if you do, they know, you know that it's very difficult to get out. Our entire trail will be accessible to wheelchairs. So I wanna get the people who have an interest in that to organize an event where the wheelchairs are themselves, who are looking at and the people riding them. The wheelchairs on parade. And then we can, we can let the people off there. They'll have, they'll be able to come down the trail and come around the curb and then we'll have a table with the lemonade and the cookies. And we'll have a prize for the wheelchair, but that's for most grandchildren. We got, we got some great ideas that are going to resonate, I think, with residents, residents very well. So I come to ask your sympathy and cooperation and if you guys have something that you wanna do on the trail or have something about the trail that you wanna talk about. After the Rail Trail Advisory Committee is through with his job, then you'll have to deal with us. And we'll, we'll play as best we can.
What's the name of the group?
Oh, they, we finally voted a name. That, that was a contentious issue. The name is the Legacy Rail Trail of Weston. And if you wanna pronounce it, it can be Lertow or Lertow. But if you don't wanna pronounce it, then, then you're okay. It was, it was felt that we would take away the responsibility of the Weston Three Hundred in deploying the benches and the, and the pavers. Cause that's something, that's a contract that was made by that organization with the residents of the town that it ought to be fulfilled. We are in the process of do, of starting that and we're going to do it on the new, by the sea trail when it actually gets built. And we've been talking to the designers of that and so on. And so we want the name Legacy in there to reflect that, but also to reflect the fact that even the rail trail itself is a legacy that's given us and we should be preserving for, for future residents.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Paul, um, who's gonna be responsible for maintaining the trail? And where's the money coming from to do that?
Are you, are you asking as a question of law or as a question of practice?
Well.
By, by law, DCR, the, the land of the trail is owned by MDT, by the state. And DCR is paying for the entire construction of the trail itself. And they have promised that they will mow the shoulders.
Every sort, every sort.
Shoulders have to be mowed. And they have promised to do that. Every other town I've talked to where that promise has been made said, well, when it finally comes down to it, they don't show up because they got too much else on their plate. So as a practical matter, I think that our committee will probably decide something as simple as that and we'll figure out a way of doing it, maybe in collaboration with the Forest and Trail Association. Now, as far as maintaining, when you, when you get actual potholes and that sort of thing, that's something that DCR is, is supposed to do. And if you keep at them enough, they actually do do that.
Cause one of the things that actually came up, one of the committees you should, be sure you visited, the new sustainable committee?
Oh, yes. I talked to him the other day.
Good. And one, let me just go on for a second. One of the things we were talking, cause I'm on the liaison point to that committee from the, from the planning board. And one of the things that came up was the pesticides and herbicides that the power companies use along that stretch. And we were wondering how that worked with the rail trail. So I think there's an interesting conversation to be had.
I think there is. We haven't had that conversation yet.
Right.
We certainly can. I've, I've seen the, the workmen out there and I haven't seen them actually apply. And he said, they, they bring out their saws and they cut things and they have to do that.
I know there is a vegetative management program which is submitted to the CONCON and that goes through, that's how they do it. But I think it's, would be a helpful thing if the new Rail Trail Committee and the Legacy Trail Committee and the Sustainable Committee just take a peek at what's going on.
Excellent idea. What I thought you were gonna say is that, is that SWAG and the Sustainability Committee are doing the, how shall I say? Second annual town line cleanup in April for a whole week. And they're encouraging neighborhoods to get together to pick up the litter in the springtime, after all the snow has melted in their neighborhood. And they're making arrangements at that place to take it and so on. And I said, well, how, how about the rail trail? Shouldn't that also be picked up? And I said, yes. And guess who ended up with that?
The dog.
So we're, so we're gonna do some of that and we're gonna try to take the opportunity to remove some of the accumulated stuff in the cattle passes. If you take a look in the cattle passes, you'll find out people have used it as a garbage truck. There's, there's old tires in there, for example. And I think that that might be a good time to get some boy scouts or some volunteers from, from middle school or high school to come out and actually do some cleanups of it. We hope to do that in April.
Sounds good.
I have a question about the depot on your shirt. Are there any plans to restore the depot?
Yeah, what about Cory's building?
At the very least, to replace the roof?
Yeah.
Since there's a car on it right now.
The, the depot is in private ownership. And that's all I can say about it. There, there is another section of, of the trail which has not yet been designed and that's a tenth of a mile between the eastern and, and the Waltham border. There's a tenth of a mile there and that's the place where it goes, it passes over Stony Brook where there's a historic bridge that nobody can see. And then it passes over the Pittsburgh line on it, where, with trains on their way to Campbell Green and Point West. That still has to be designed and the role that our committee plays and the role that DCR plays is still subject to negotiation. And it's also the case that people have looked at that Trestle Bridge and said, this would be a wonderful way, wonderful way of accomplishing some other objective. And think of the driveway for the forty B as the latest example of that. And I, I'm very interested in the fact that the forty B project seems to be leading in the direction of access off of Route twenty rather than across from Jones Road. And that would be very good for, for the town, I think, because the rail trail could continue across the bridge just as the tracks originally did. And the bridge itself, of course, is a historical structure. It was, it dates back eighteen ninety-six. And I could tell you more about that than you want to know, but I won't.
Are there any questions or comments from anyone in the audience about what Paul has to say or?
I, I was just gonna, I was just gonna clarify that the name of the trail that you were asking, it's called the Weston Three Hundred Legacy Trail Trust Incorporated? In case you're curious.
Well, that's, that's the old name.
Yeah, that was, you had given it, you weren't sure of it, but that is it.
Well, that is still the name because we're still in the legal process of changing ownership. To, to change the ownership, they have to get the current directors, of which there are three of them, the current officers, to agree to step down and they will appoint new officers and then those new officers will have the legal power to change the name and to do things. And the, one of the three people who's currently an officer will continue as an officer of the new group and wants to work on the rail trail. So I think this is just great. The, the other thing I just should say, I've been going around to a lot of committees and I'm bearing in mind that there are really four major things that people will do on the, on the rail trail. One, one is recreation, one is fitness and health, getting out, exercising, so forth. One, one is transportation, if you actually wanna end up in Wayland and get your ice cream on the way back. So it's recreation, transportation and fitness. And then education because the historical artifacts ought to be restored and, and, and adequate presentations made of them. Where we are planning on that being a mission of our new organization. So I've been going around and talking to all the town bodies that have anything to do with any of those. And it's a long list and then about half of it will be this.
Well, I think the town is gonna owe your committee a debt of gratitude for taking on the responsibility of managing the, the trail and, you know, keeping it active. And it sounds like a, a great plan.
Thank you. I, I hope that, that looking back in history, that's what people will say.
Otherwise you get rotten, maybe those some.
I'm expecting that anyway. I'm expecting some of that. But the, the work of the Rail Trail Advisory Committee, which was to oversee the construction and the design of it and the work of actually running it are two things and we're having a gradual handoff between one organization and the other. And I think we've got a lot of goodwill going with us. I wanna establish goodwill with all the other town organizations, including the planning board across.
Well, we look forward to working with you.
Great.
Thanks, Paul. Sue, did you have a question?
Sue has a question.
Yeah, um, hi. Question for Ellen.
Suzanne Ryan, this is a tiny person.
Tiny person in the corner, yes.
Hi, Sue.
Hi. Question is, um, if, say, a year goes by and a person has a problem with getting on their property, like that, who would be, would you be people that they would call to talk about a problem they were having? Where would administration of the rules and regulations be coming from?
Did everybody hear the question?
The, the question was if somebody sees, sees a problem, who should they complain to? Now, let, let me tell you that there are certain problems. The, the DCR has a rule about animals that all dogs on the trail must be on short leashes. Now, that's different from the Forest and Trail Association, which manages the conservation land in which the thing is that the owner has to have voice control. Now, those are two very different things. Consequently, a lot of people have started adopting the voice control thing on the, on the rail trail. And I can't tell you how many people I've informed that pretty soon we're gonna start, have to start enforcing that. The enforcement of what goes on on the trail is supposed to be the responsibility of the town through its police department. And there's a new animal officer that, that should be involved in that. So far, we haven't worked out the details. Currently, the thing to do is to, is to call the police if you see something really, really bad. If you just see one person with a dog off leash, well, you don't have to call the police over that. But they have a program which they're going to set up called the BARK program, which takes volunteers and the volunteers are supposed to work with other people that they see and be in a pleasant, neighborly sort of way, tell them about the rules. That's what we've been trying to do so far. So this is an extension of that. I think that will be a good program when we actually get it going. The Animal Control Officer, the new Animal Control Officer, she brought that up and wants to, wants to work on that. Now, as far as people are concerned, if, if a people come off the trail, the chances are that, that either they're trying to get to the road that's nearest or something like that. If you think that these people are, have evil intents of one sort, thing to do is to call the police.
Okay. All right. So if the police are, would be the gateway to access, you all perhaps were, any, they will know that, of course, correct?
They should know that, and I think they do. There is, I should say, a police patrol right now. There's one officer and one motorcycle. Who's, the officer is trained for motorcycle use. And there's one motorcycle, and I've seen him on the trail. Goes down there every few days. Not the best way to actually be any police presence which keeps bad things from happening. The police are aware of this, and we're gradually putting in the place, the details that we're on.
One last thing. So when you are, so they are aware, and when you're putting in the details, are you going to be, I assume you are going to be meeting with them, the police department, to see what they see their role as?
Yes, this is a job which the rail trail advisory committee is beginning to do. We're starting with the animal control officer.
Great.
Because that's the place where it will show up most naturally.
Exactly.
People sometimes worry about riding their bikes and then coming in your back door, stealing your television, and then riding their bikes back to wherever. That's just a vision that has no reality to it. If people want to rob your house, what they're going to do is go into your front door because they can, they can get there by a road. They don't have to go.
Okay, but you will be, just, you will be, including the police department, sort of say, when you ask how we all formulate the rules and how things will be enforced?
Yes, yes.
And who would people would call? And those people would then go to people who knew what they were talking about and ask what to take in, rather than just the ending?
I hope that's the case. And we will work toward making that the case. Whether we're entirely successful, I can't say, but we'll do our best.
Great, all right.
One more comment, Diana?
Are horses allowed? Are horses allowed on the trail?
Yes, horses are allowed. However, it's more inconvenient in an odd sort of a way. The, across green use in the western end is quite strong. There are people in Wayland who have come and used the trail before it was paved to get to the Weston Town Forest and especially be able to get up to the Dixon Horse Ring. That's a little bit more difficult now because the safety fences that have been put up, they have long bolts in them. And because they're long bolts, they scratch the side of the horse. The horse, you'd think, would come right up against the fence. But no, the bolts protrude. So now there's a motion that people are going to go and get sawzles and cut off the end of the bolts. It's gotten to this level. But there are enough horsey people in Wayland and Weston that they're going to find their way. And there is room and space for them to do that. And they found their own path earlier, and now it's a little more difficult, but they still will. And horses are allowed. Yes, that was your question.
Any more questions for Paul? Okay, Paul, thank you very much.
Well, thank you all.
Is there anything we can do to help your committee? Is there any? Paul, my question was, is there anything that we can do as a committee to help your board?
Well, there is, he'll hear from us.
Fair enough.
I do have a write-up of a statement I made at the Open Space and Recreation Forum about the group. And I'll be happy to give you a lot of copies to read it into the record in some sense.
Great, thank you.
And if any audience would like a copy, I have a few squares.
Great, Paul, thanks again.
Thank you all.
Paul? Is, I know, it's all right. I can do it. She's, Diana's motion, this is somebody here from the Safe Roots to School presentation, so.
We are here.
Oh, okay.
Apologies for being late.
That's all right, no problem. Are you ready for the presentation?
Uh, yes.
All right. Please, go ahead. Are you going to be showing something on the screen here?
Uh, yeah.
So we got one little.
There you go. You want yours?
Yeah. Hi, thank you, everyone. My name is Pat Kelsey. This is Samantha Gold. We're with the Safe Roots to School Massachusetts program. Safe Roots to School Massachusetts is a free program for middle school and elementary schools throughout the state. We're one of the few statewide Safe Roots to School programs. These occasionally exist at the county or even city level. We serve all three hundred and fifty towns in Massachusetts. So you can see some of our activity. It's plotted in the places that you would expect, clustered around where there are lots of schools and where schools are the most walkable. Our mission statement is to make it safe to walk where it is not and to encourage walking and biking where it is. So I'll let Samantha run through the five Es, which are the foundation of our program. Sorry, excuse me, six Es. We added the sixth E, which is equity, about a year and a half ago. Now, most of the Es have actual program elements. For instance, for education, we have things like pedestrian and bike safety programs. Equity is an E that kind of innovates all the other Es. So it exists at almost every level of everything we do. We try to have an equity component to it. I'll let Sam walk you through the five, six Es.
Thanks. So our first E, as we said, is education. We have pedestrian and bicycle safeties. We go in class and meet with the students in their class. There's different forms of pedestrian safety. We can either do a lesson just to, say, second graders, or we can also do a mentor lesson where we would train trainers. So we would train middle schoolers to teach the younger students. And that way, both grades learn more about pedestrian safety. And then we also have bicycle safety. Bike rodeos are on-bike programs. So we'll set up obstacle courses outside with the MAPS bike. They're the statewide trainers. They'll come out to that. Sometimes we get the police involved. It's a lot of fun. We also have middle school programs. These include curriculum that we can give to teachers to include pedestrian safety and bicycle safety. And then, like I said earlier, they can also help with training the younger students.
Our pedestrian safety also meets the standards for physical education in Massachusetts. So we have downloadable resources for PE teachers if they want to do pedestrian safety on their own, instead of having us come into the school. We encourage them to kind of be sustainable without us. But we are also available if we want to take over for a gym teacher, typically how we do it. We just do one class at a time, and we replace phys- physical activity, hold it right in.
The next E is encouragement. We actually had our winter walk to school day this morning. So a lot of schools participated in that. And we have about nine E schools signed up today. Then there's other ways to include walking, such as you can choose a day, such as walking Wednesday, for the students to walk to school every week, just to get that cycle going. Then we also promote walking school buses. This is where students gather at a location and walk to school together, usually accompanied by a parent or guardian. And then we also have Walk Across America interactive poster, where students can figure out how many miles they're walking and then find out how many miles that would take them across America. So it's kind of an activity. The next E is enforcement. Including the local police department and a lot of our events, it's a great way to get the kids motivated, have role models to look up to. Sometimes they'll come out to the bike rodeos and then on the giveaways. And they're also there to train our crossing guards. As, if you check out our Crossing Guard Reference Guide and video, you'll see a lot of local police officials. Next E is evaluation. We have walking assessments where we'll gather a group of Safe Roots committee, parents, principals. And we'll get, we'll go on a two-mile radius around the school to figure out the best walking paths and the safest paths for students to get to school. We also find more information about that with our parent survey. This is available in nine different languages. It takes about two minutes for parents to fill it out. We gain information, like where the students are coming from, how many students are walking and biking. And this helps us determine safer routes to get to school.
One other thing, just to jump in, that's not on this slide, just a little old, is arrival dismissal assessments. So these differ from walk assessments in a few key ways. Walk assessments are really designed to select a route for, say, your flagship day participation or your walking school bus. Whereas an arrival dismissal is really more about the processes that the school undertake. If we think that they should implement a hangtag system, where the parents display an actual large number in the window and kids are called accordingly, we can recommend that. Most of our recommendations from arrival dismissal assessments center around increasing walking and biking. This is something we usually have to be very explicit about. It's the big pain point for schools, arrival dismissal. And the most painful part is the motor vehicle congestion. Since we are CMAC-funded, we are not allowed to make cars flow any better. So a lot of times, we have to be very specific when we speak to parents about how, if you drive your child to school, you will probably have a similar experience, even though you might have to park somewhere different, take a different route, go a different entrance. Most of our recommendations center around driving kids less and walking and biking more.
What is CMAC?
Congestion mitigation and air quality. This is a federal funding mechanism that makes Safe Roots to School possible. So if we were to, say, increase capacity for motor vehicles at a school, we would be not serving the best interest of that funding mechanism.
Thank you.
This is just an example of the reports we get after parents take the survey. We also get a map that shows different walk sheds. For example, it'd be like a five-minute walk shed, it'll take five minutes for kids to get to school, or a ten-minute walk shed. You can see the dots are where students are coming from. So we can really figure out the best ways to get to school.
And I believe yellow is driving, blue is walking. Sorry, yellow's bus, red is driving, blue is walker bike, and green is carpool.
Engineering is always an important one. We just passed our infrastructure application, but we have other grants and applications, such as the science and lines application. Schools will apply for that and are able to receive grants for science and engineering processes around the school. Emily, can we go back, sorry, for a second to engineering?
Yeah.
Are there guidelines that you have that you use for that?
Yes. So, do you mean design guidelines or application?
Design guidelines, et cetera, yes.
So the engineering program, essentially, Safe Roots to School has a small pot of money that schools can apply for. Typically, the funding is around a million dollars for a Safe Roots to School project that gets to about a mile and a half of sidewalk. Your project is much more likely to be funded if it currently exists in a planning area somewhere. Now, that could be as simple as a, you know, forty-year plan that says, we want to improve walking and biking in our town. But the more designed and the more kind of complete that is, the more likely masthead is going to be to select that project to fund. There have historically been about five projects a year completed. About fifty-five schools applied this round. And the, as Sam mentioned, the application period closed on January eleventh. So we're about a full year out from the next application period. But even for schools that don't receive funding from us, the exercise is very useful for them. There's about a thirty-five-page document that takes you through step-by-step the application process. It's all online. But you will need a MapIt account. MapIt is the Massachusetts Project Intake Tool, where you actually submit all your paperwork, submit supporting documents, submit any photos, letters of support from the community. But it's useful to start thinking about it even now for next year's, because it's a pretty in-depth process. But these are the sorts of projects that usually come out of it. Now, that funding does go towards design as well. But we don't have specific design guidelines within Safe Roots. We kind of defer to town planners. And the firm that does the design, more to win the award, is AECOM.
Okay.
It's a Juke-Pick engineering firm.
Yes, and they are the ones who will do the work?
Yes.
Okay.
They're design-built.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
All right, the final E is equity. This E fits into all the other Es I mentioned previously. This means that we'll reach out to all elementary and middle schools in our region, regardless of the location, students, or language barriers. And getting started. A great way to get started is to start a parent survey. This helps find the information about how many students are actually walking or biking to school and where the students are coming from. Another great way to start is participating in our flagship day. So that would be one of our many walk-to-school days, like our winter walk-to-school day this morning. Creating task force formation. This can involve parents, PTO, the principal, even local law enforcement.
Plan board.
And scheduling and pedestrian safety. A lot of schools are trying to schedule them in the springtime, when a lot of students are getting ready to walk to school.
So every school in Weston is partnered with us officially. All it takes to partner with us is a signature on a form. The challenge that we face typically is that school administrative staff turns over rather quickly. So even though every school in Weston is officially a Safe Roots to School partner, we occasionally go into schools that we're partnered with and they say, we've never heard of you. Two of the schools are active. We have about eight hundred schools. I'll pretend to know off the top of my head that Field and Woodland are the two more active ones. They participate in the flagship days, they do the pedestrian safety lessons. But the other two, Country and Middle, are not active, even though they are officially partnered. So what we seek from a planning board or a municipal body is essentially a connection to the superintendent, who can connect us then to principals. And when it kind of comes from above like that, the buy-in is kind of built in. The other way that we do it is, we go to the parents first and kind of go bottom up, but both work. So that is our only ask for today, is that we be connected to a superintendent who can get us into the schools and we can kind of pluck some of these low-hanging fruit items. These are all very light lifts for the school, but very beneficial.
Well, the school committee was represented here tonight.
Oh, no.
Neil Hyde.
Hi, thanks.
This is Daniel Black.
Hi, thanks for having me. Sorry I was late, I was at another board meeting.
That's all right, you started late anyway.
Okay, yeah.
So maybe you're the contact person.
Yeah, happy to be, yeah.
Yeah.
So for sure, thank you.
If anyone has any questions, Sam's contact info. Sam will be your point of contact for all things Safe Roots. And we have business cards here, so you guys can reach out with any questions.
Have you done any surveys of any schools?
Not within the past two years. We usually do a survey about every two years or so, just so we don't do the same kids over and over. We kind of want to let the student body turn over a little bit.
Right, right. You have some history of surveys.
Yeah.
So I could contact you and maybe get a help there.
Yes, it would be over two years old, so it might not represent the current student.
That's kind of obviously what a survey looks like, in the real life.
Okay. So there was, the map of the walk sheds, the five-minute, ten-minute is a big piece of it. And then the other thing that it does is compares your school to the rest of the state. So it's all compiled by NA PC, the Metropolitanary Planning Commission. And they hold all the data on what streets are where. And so you get a nice kind of snapshot of where you rank relative to other parts of Massachusetts.
Have you any statistics on how many kids walk to school, how many kids bike to school, and how much of the program is held?
Nationally, or?
It's a massive, two things, so.
So in Massachusetts, we're a little bit more walkable than the rest of the country. The US stats are the ones that I know off the top of my head. Compared to nineteen seventy, about fifty percent of kids walk to school. Now, we are about twelve percent.
Twelve percent of kids walk to school in Massachusetts?
Yeah. Or a little better. I would say, I would estimate that it's more close to fifteen, maybe, maybe a little shade above, but.
And how many bike?
Biking is less than one percent.
Less than one?
Yeah. So that follows the typical kind of mode share of adults, in that, like, less than one percent.
If you change behavior and add some services, realistically, what could it go up to?
That's largely context-dependent. That's largely context-dependent. What we have seen in one of the stats that the National Center talks about a lot, because people tend to zero in on engineering, they think, well, there's just no sidewalks here, there's just no bike lanes here. Engineering on its own, we see around eighteen percent increase in walkers and bikers. The other four Es, in the absence of engineering, we see twenty-one percent increase. So the other four Es...
How is like forty percent increase, second?
When combined, something like thirty percent.
Okay. You see, you go from twelve percent to eighteen percent.
So those are percent increases.
Oh, I got it. We did kind of that math.
Yeah, yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
You described the decline in the percentage of kids going walking and biking to school to some cause? Or is it, it must be a cluster of causes?
Yeah. Cheap oil is kind of what I blame for everything. Cheap oil, land development patterns, the same reason everyone kind of drives. The reason we're funded by C-MAC is because they consider this a congestion problem as much as anything else. One-third of all rush hour trips make a school run at some point. So it's a big part of congestion in general. So it's, you know, all those kind of bigger picture factors.
Well, a little bit of help is a lot of help.
Yeah.
You know, it's ten percent of it, it's a big plus.
Yeah, exactly.
Great. Any comments from any one of the audience? Yes, Paul?
Let me just say that I regret to say that our new rail trail was nowhere near the high school. High school, so it can't help your very, very lovable activity.
Does it go near any of the other schools? We're actually only scoped to work with middle and elementary, so we wouldn't be able to work with the high school specifically, unless maybe they're all clustered close to each other?
Well, there is a cluster, and it's closer than the high school is, but it still has barriers between the rail trail and the schools themselves. And that would have to be taken into account somehow. And also, there aren't a large number of houses that are close enough to the rail trail that kids could walk to it and then get on the rail trail and then get off somewhere close to the school. We should think about that, though. But I did see that a lot of your examples use trails in the photographs, and I can understand why, because they're inherently safe environments. If there is an interest in Weston in implementing some of the training, you had a training session for bicycle inspection, I think, something of that nature.
Yep.
The rail trail would be perfect for that. We would be happy to have somebody in town organize and use the safe environment of the rail trail to actually do that.
Would one of your events?
That would be great, yeah.
That would be a great event.
Our bike rodeos typically require something like a parking lot to be cleared. Police are common hosts of that sort of thing, because they can kind of corral cars and, you know, forbid them from an area and say, "Here's your bike rodeo space." I've never done a bike rodeo on a trail. A lot of the obstacle courses, just geometrically, are large. But it certainly could work. We can work almost in any context. What I'm thinking about that could be even better is a bike train. A bike train is the bike version of a walking school bus. It's a group of kids that bike together. It's one of the safer ways to ride is in a group like that. It takes a little bit more dedicated of a parent chaperone, and you have less than one percent of the population to draw from for that chaperone, since so few people bike. But those are the common uses of rail trails, and trails in general for the Safer to programs, is bike trains.
You mean with traffic and sidewalk committees, eh?
Yeah, we do.
That would be interesting.
Yeah, we will engage with them, especially around the funding, the engineering funding mechanisms. Now, the projects that I mentioned and the funding grant that I mentioned are just kind of the bigger one we have. Sam mentioned briefly the signs and lines application. That's like a ten thousand dollar project. If you just want, you know, a few new, you know, school zone signs, not rapid flash or anything like that, and just need to upgrade a few crosswalks. We did that in Lawrence. We upgraded about fourteen crosswalks for less than ten grand. That is intended to be a little bit more of an agile, smaller-scale funding mechanism that is less competitive than our, you know, fifty-five people apply and five receive type grant. But it is not open yet, but Sam will let you know as soon as that application is open as well.
There's no group in Massachusetts called Safer to Trains, or...
There's not. Safer to Parks is the only other Safer to offshoot that has sprung up recently. I believe that's a project of the National Center for Safer to School. We don't have much of a connection with them, and no, unfortunately, no Safer to Trains, yet.
Most people think of, in a town like Weston, most people think of the roof as being related to the street layout. So that it's a sidewalk next to a road. But one of the things that Khan Khan has talked to me about recently is trying to knit together the town's non-street-related trail network so that we can actually get from one part of town to the other part of town without actually having to parallel the part of the traffic street. And there's some missing links that the planning board might be useful in developing when we're looking at site plan review on certain proposed projects or inflexible subdivisions. So something we might keep in mind, because it's an alternative to going on a sidewalk next to a busy road. Just then, you know.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, because one of the great things, as you know, is that we have cluster schools that are not in neighborhoods. And the three elementary schools back uptown land or a cemetery, there's not a lot of neighbors. And then, you know, when you think that the population town is only thirty percent using, you know, school-aged children, there's not a lot of houses near the elementary school that then have school-aged children, because they abut all kinds of, whether it be the cemetery, or case estates, or town land. So taking sidewalks or roads to get there is a real, you know, roundabout way to get there, so I think anything...
Semataries are a common route for walking school buses. It takes them getting used to, but they're very safe.
Right, right. So anything that would kind of tie in some of these trails would be welcome, for sure.
Any other questions, comments? I think you need to talk with Danielle and get to the school superintendent, and that sounds like the next step.
Wonderful.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks for having us. Thank you. You should refer people to the Mass Trains Grant, which I'm sure you're aware of, who don't get our grant.
Right, next on the, our agenda is forty-four, continuation of the hearing on forty-four Old Street. Can you talk about forty-four Old Street? As I remember, you have a contract, right?
I have a subcontractor, so not the primary contractor on the project, but... My name's Kevin Tiller. I represent Brady Gilson, who initiated the amendment to the site plans beginning of the hearing in November.
If I could just, oh, you're working on this one. If you could bring us up to speed on where we left off at the hearing before, and I guess you're here to describe what the current status is. So if you could just bring us a little history, and then we can then take it from there with your presentation.
Sure, absolutely. Yes, so the whole project is, we're working on the communication sunroom. On the last meeting, there were some questions about landscaping plan. This is the original plan that they gave us. The landscaping on the property isn't actually completely. I've spoken with the applicants. They have actually given us a landscape estimate. Right now is not a good time to be planted, since it's the winter, but they are willing to be, shoot it on, if that is appropriate for you to. Besides that, we also have... I'm not sure. Are you still doing a fence? What fence you're...
Yeah, but they were before.
Yeah, so we can talk about that a little bit later as well. I live in the Asbough. On the left of the property, they have an existing driveway, but then they also put a permanent bulk parking area, basically. Some added addition. We have actually talked to Dave Conley. He approved the stormwater calculations on that. Khan Khan also approved it. It just needs to be approved by us as well. We should focus on that as we go through the process as well.
Can somebody just enumerate the things that we identified at the hearing before? I think the gravel parking area was, we then identified.
It was one of the things, yeah.
Was it one of the things?
Uh, the parking, this parking area was...
Can we back up for a sec?
Yes.
There was a neighbor who was very displeased about all the things that had been done. He was supposed to make a list.
He's here.
Okay, that's great. So I guess the question is, if he's done that list, have they... Is what they've done conforming to his list? Are they going to undo it? Are they going to rectify it? Are we going to just let him get away, you know, get away with it? I mean, I don't understand this.
Yeah, I mean, we have our own list, and if you have any more questions about, you know, where we're on the process of, if you're still missing, up to their plans, you can explain that.
Well, wait a minute. Let's go through this in a systematic way. What was it that we were...
So first thing, first, we'll go back to the landscape plan.
Okay.
Their yard is not fully replicant of this.
What does that mean?
It doesn't, it's not, we're missing a lot of bushes. These aren't lined up properly.
So they're missing a lot of plants?
Wait a minute, your hand is moving everywhere. These aren't located properly. What isn't located properly?
There's a lot that's not...
They move a bit farther back, because you're always right in front of it, everything else. Exactly. We're in the first row of movie theater, without the popcorns.
So for an example of the plan, you know, there's a mix of plantings here, kind of jagged through the front yard.
Yeah.
You go here, it's the same species lined up.
Okay, okay.
Also, we are concerned about the sunroom. The neighbor's property needs to be shielded with some buffers.
So you can play there.
As well.
Yeah, there were some trees that were taken down and thought in the back that shouldn't have been.
Yeah.
And there were also spotlights that shouldn't have been.
Yeah, they replaced those.
And there's bigger paths and permeable surfaces that shouldn't have been.
Yeah. Well, that's why we're here today, we're here to talk about permeable surfaces, discuss the landscaping assessment that they have had, and then...
Well, the permeable surface, if I'm looking at the previous slide, took the place of a number of plantings for the lack of the trivalent, did it not?
Yeah, some of these are the dangers would be in the place of that permeable surface.
And then, it looked like there were a couple of existing trees there that were supposed to remain. I don't know if they're still there or not still there. Are they, you know, you know, I'm looking at the two, the big circle and the smaller circle.
Yeah, they should be.
They should be.
Yeah.
Okay, they should be. And then there was a fence that was going to go in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is the fence in?
There's not in, but they have a, they're planning to.
They're planning to put a fence in. Okay, so, and then there was a shed that turned out to be done. I guess that's gone now? That shed was demolished at some point, or... So it's, what's happening with that? Is there a new shed going in that location, or no shed?
I mean, I'm sure the applicants can speak to that. This is, you know, the property, they know exactly what's going, what's not going.
Just trying to remember what it was that we were missing with.
Is there anything else on the neighbor's list that we haven't mentioned? Because he lives right next door.
Yeah, I mean, is there anything else that we need?
There's the irrigation system that's going on, a rule or a well there. Let's see, there was the concern about the consistent outside construction, hot working hours, excavator on weekends, evenings, and systemally doing work outside, hammering with tile saws. I called the police probably half dozen times on them, and they just continue to ignore.
Has that continued since the hearing in November?
They haven't done any worse since the hearing in November, because it's been winter time now. I just look at, there's a blue tarp out in the back there, there's construction debris around the property. Also, the COA was issued without what it potentially shouldn't have been, if I recall, was part of the last discussion.
Yeah, so actually, the COA, the building inspector has the authority to issue a COA. If he does an inspection on the house, you know, he's, it has basically a lot of heat like the safety concern. But a permanent CO is basically, you guys need to, you know, issue it.
When you say COA, I think you mean...
So they're finalizing the house for a hundred and eighty days, as John signed it for.
And when did that start, November?
September, months after.
Is the sunset date on the temporary COA?
Right, but I'm wondering when the temporary start?
Yeah, Dr. John, Chief Inspector, said it's running two months at the process. So there can be like ninety days out of the year right now.
Okay, but there is a sunset date on the temporary COA?
Yeah, and they can also issue another one, so it's not...
Oh, okay, so we can keep issuing?
We can keep going as long as we want.
Yeah. Right, but they can't, they can't get a final until we sign off.
Yeah, the sunroom, they may already Google it for that.
And when, and when this, the planning board reviewed this and gave permit, was it to this owner or a different owner? Was it sold in the in-between?
It was to this owner.
It was to this owner, yeah.
All right, so that's, is that, we touched all the bases?
The patio is also a part as well.
Yeah.
During the initial meetings, the patio was asked to be scaled down considerably. They, in the letter submitted, said they were out of the country, and the builder took it upon himself to enlarge the patio and put in a fire pit, which I find it hard to believe that any builder would just, out of the kindness of his heart, just build a fifty percent larger patio without some sort of guidance from the homeowner.
And when you're ready, I'm helping the family, working with the town, so when you're ready for me to explain, there's a lot of things I can explain to you, when you're ready, because of the language barrier. So I helped with conservation, and I've been working with the planner to make things, to go through the checklist with them.
All right.
So whenever you're ready, I can explain a lot of things.
Very good. And could you just give us your name?
Carol Gilbert, thirty-seventh School Street.
Okay. Well, good, so you were going to describe what you have done since the hearing prior.
So I represent the sunroom company that is looking to install a sunroom on the existing base that's there right now.
That's it?
That's it.
Oh, well, in that case, then we need to talk to you.
Sure.
So, okay, I think it would be better.
And your background, is what, you're an architect, you're a landscaper, you are...
I am a Weston resident, and I am a lawyer, and I am the next-door neighbor to their friend. So I was brought into the system as, number one, if I could be helpful with the language barrier, and also...
Do you speak the language?
No, they have a translator that, if you don't mind, if he'll say some things. Sometimes they understand. So what I've been doing is going to the town planner. And the first thing I did was, when I heard there was a problem, I went down there and I met with them and I said, "What are the things that we need to do?" And so one of them, there were two meetings coming up, one was conservation and one was this meeting. So I wrote down the three things, and I usually email, but I've met with them in person as well. The first thing was the stormwater engineering plan had to be done, and that was done. But then there was an issue of another, the runoff.
Yep.
Yeah, and that, number one was checked off, so we completed that. My understanding was there were three things for this meeting. And number two was the lighting. The folks had to take down some spotlights. They had installed some lights, two on the back of the house. I have pictures, but you know what they are, you've already done. And then two on the front of the house, they were not, which I had never heard of, this term, dark side compliant, but now I know. So the folks purchased those lights. They thought that, they weren't quite sure how to go about it, but I confirmed with the town. They purchased them, they sent them the information regarding what type of lights were purchased. They got them, and then I also told them that per the town, they didn't want them just to have them, they wanted them installed. And they wanted the old lights taken down, so they are installed now.
And the old ones are taken down?
Yes, the spotlights on the side of the garage are taken down, two in the back, two in the front, and pictures have been sent. That are installed.
So you've got like two lights in the back, and two lights in the front.
Is that a temporary lamp, is the under light?
Temporary lamp.
Why?
Those are Christmas lights, I think.
Is that what those are?
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Yeah.
I'm tired, I can't quite... Sideways and within two feet, and... Sideways and within two feet and...
Yeah, so it kind of just looks like this. It's like a battery.
There's the fixtures.
Is that dark sky?
Yeah, it's dark sky.
There's the description of them attached before they purchased them, right?
Dark sky compliant. And they put those, they took them out, so it'll be okay.
Do you know where the fixture is in the, in the, in the light houses?
Back on the napkin?
No, no, there isn't.
There's a bulb in the house.
There's a bulb. Where is it?
I believe it's on the very top of it.
Right up in there?
Yeah.
All right, so that's all the fixtures. What else?
They're not all fixed, though. There's still some other, there are still unshielded lights on the side of the house.
But they're all done?
Correct.
Well, the, according to the town, which is what I have been dealing with, the town, because that's what they have to deal with as far as, I mean, their compliance. So, I checked with the town and the two in the back and the two in the front had been replaced and the spotlights are down. That's what I was.
That we made sure that all the lights that were up, that weren't dark compliant, were down.
So, for the.
So, these are put up. I believe the whole lights were taken out. I don't know if there's something replacing them.
So, has something been put up since then that was not a dark sky compliant?
Nothing up there on the other property should be dark, not.
The driveway lights are not. They're unshielding bulbs. They're shield fixtures. All right, saw them and locked out the car night.
Every fixture, exterior fixture on the property should be dark sky compliant.
I was told by the town exactly what I needed to have done to them. That's why I met with the town.
Right, but the initial permit.
This has been the history of this, that things sort of happen.
I mean, the initial permit was very clear about what had to be done.
Yeah, I haven't done a site visit since maybe late December, so I haven't seen the actual house and stuff.
Yeah.
So, you have not been?
I mean, I went to Sue, actually. That was the last time I was there, probably.
So, what, when was that?
December, I'm surprised.
So, it was after the November?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Meeting.
That was our scheduled site visit.
I'd be worth just checking, because they may have spread it some new fixtures.
We have a picture of the lights on the side and if I, when I looked at them, the fix, the bulb is up in the housing.
Sounds like, but we're talking about fixtures that are not attached to the building, you might.
Hmm, okay.
There's apparently, we've spread out some driveway lights.
The front lights have been fixed. They do look different, whether dark side compliant, I don't know, they're absolutely different. The ones on the side of the house which are facing are absolutely not. They are just a frosty glass enclosure with a bright light bulb that is very clear there. The plans originally showed two fixtures that are reinstalled. They did give her the floodlights, though, which was a very nice thing to do because that was a delight to have all the time.
So, we need to sign off on everything.
We need everything.
And a current, a current sign off, not one from two months ago.
Yeah.
The other thing that concerns me is the drainage, the permeable surface right next to the owner, next to the neighbor.
Yeah.
Because, again, I wasn't here with the planning board to do that, but I assumed that they would look and say, "Oh, there's so much buffer between me and thee." And I see that buffer going away now. I'm not sure it's, I'm not sure it's back.
And that solar surface also where the landscape.
Can you go back to the picture of the...
I'm sorry, two people.
The planner, the actual?
I, I wasn't told as far as getting a permit that anything to do with... I was just told specific items to help the homeowners. And what was the plan? And I understand exactly what it is because, well, we had a landscaper come out. And to the left of the driveway, driving pavement, right where that white thing is. A little bit down, there is part of the drainage system. Just, just a tiny bit on the original plan.
That's not what she's talking about.
Right, those pavers to the left
Yeah.
are going to be taken up
Yeah.
by the landscaper because those are where, if you look on the plan of the...
There's a lot of planting.
It's a rododendrus. So, so what happened was the owners had put those in because when they backed out of the driveway, it was driving into the mud. So, that those can be removed because I, what we did was we got a landscaper to submit a plan, what the town wanted, with exactly how much it would cost to comply with all of those, every single bush and shrub that was on the plan. And the trees on the left that you were pointing out, between the neighbor's house, are still there.
Okay.
And the trees that have gone up in the front of the house are actually the right type of tree, but they were all planted in a straight line. So, the estimate that we got from Anza Landscaping, and we brought it to the town, and they told us that was exactly what they were looking for, that things that could be done in the spring. I asked about the far end of the property, which is back toward the wetlands. And the homeowners had said that they had bought some of those shrubs. It had already been conservation told me the same thing. But because there hadn't been an inspection, so the town hadn't been out and exactly said how much they put in. The landscaper went back there too and we could see before it snowed if there were some of those plants put in. So, he did the estimate for the entire everything. Because even though they put in some of the shrubs on the front of the property, they might have to be moved to stagger. As you can see, they weren't a straight line as the person put them in. So, Anza Landscaping gave an estimate to include everything, even if they've already put something in, because this would be to get a bond through the town so that it could be installed in the spring. So, it might not be that they need to do that. And some of the ones in the front can be moved and staggered. So, everything is included and then they'll be able to take up those permeable neighbors.
Can I ask a question? So, have we been given a brand new landscaping plan to review? I mean, that's what it's sounding like.
No, it's an estimate to do this.
Or have you taken this plan with the sizes and everything else?
That will be looked at.
Is that what they've done?
Yes.
So, the same sizes, the same locations, the same variation, all of that?
And even if they already, they did put some in, he's, he's still adding. Saying he might have to move some of those, but he doesn't know it's out back, so he included.
Is that the plan there?
This is your plan that we enlarged because we couldn't see it. It was so small.
Yeah.
But the landscaper went out and we were told, even by conservation, I went to the conservation meeting regarding the patio and that was approved. It was slightly bigger than what had been approved, but not as big as originally. And the conservation approved the patio as it is built now. And when I talked to them, yes, the conservation meeting was last week. And they approved the patio plan as it's built now.
As it's built now is not as like that, right?
Right.
So...
What does it look like now?
We need to know what that is. There needs to be a plan that shows exactly what's going to be built, what is built, what has been built.
What's going to change.
If, if, the plans and what's built have to be the same. This is not an optional plan. Everything has to be installed exactly as shown on this plan. If it's not, any changes made, we need to approve it first.
And that's what I told them. So, the landscaping estimate is for exactly everything there. They might have already put some of the, some of the shrubs in, but we don't know.
Can we see that document? Can we see that document?
The estimate, we gave it to the town. Who was supposed to have been last week.
They're confused.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Landscaping is not the same thing as terrace paving.
Okay, right, you started with, I didn't start.
That was a different, I apologize.
If the patio is not exactly like that today, then we need to see what it is and either approve the way it is today or it needs to be changed back to that.
Concom doesn't do site plan approval. But I don't know what they signed off on, but it's not site plan approval.
So, what you're looking for, I'm just going to connect you to that, is like a million business. So, what you're looking for is a landscaping plan to be exactly like what's there right now, which sounds like they're going to do. And you're looking for an as-built plan for what's existing right now compared to what was approved.
And that's what Anza gave and we gave it last week.
No, they're looking at an as-built plan that needs to be done by service.
So, yeah, we have the as-built plan that's done by the surveyor.
We do.
But if the Asbeld.
That's not this, though.
No, that's the, that's the proposed landscaping plan.
Do we have that on the, on the computer? We can look.
Yeah, there.
But again, if the Asbeld plan doesn't agree with that plan, then we need to approve all the changes or not.
I don't see any landscaping on that.
Yeah, we don't have one where they're merged together.
Okay.
That's what's missing.
Because this one still shows the gravel, permeable paving.
Yeah, this is more recent than the landscaping plan, so this is after they put in the.
Yeah, but they're taking that out.
No, I understand that.
Well, don't we, that's, that's what Steve is talking about. We're looking at, we're not looking at a definitive drawing that shows what is going to be there.
Bring everything up to speed on both, right?
Yeah.
This clearly shows a different patio configuration with a fire pit.
Yeah, it's got a big fire pit.
That's not what we approved. So, again, we need to approve it ways now or it's going to have to be changed back to what we approved.
But we're not, we're not at a point where we're approving a drawing. It's, it's, this is, this is sort of what they're, what they've done, but it's not what's going to be done when the dust settles.
Right.
Because that's permeable paving, that supposedly disappears and the planning goes in there, for example. And I noticed in one of the photographs, I don't know if the fence has been installed yet or not. It hasn't.
No.
Is that, is, why?
The fence?
Yeah.
Hasn't been approved yet.
It hasn't been approved.
You're asking for the whole answer.
Well, okay, but we haven't seen a submittal on it. Where is the submittal?
We have a submittal on the fence.
It's on the plan.
Which plan?
We have an evaluation.
No.
This plan?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a blue line.
Aren't you, we are anticipating a plan showing you the state that it is currently at.
But so, we're letting you know what's missing so we can make a decision.
I think it'd be nice to list the differences. Just like how it is from one to six.
What are we signing off on? That's a blue line.
So, they did provide a submittal of that. We can bring it up.
Can you bring it up? That would be great.
That might be possible.
Is this the original plan Sue's asking?
No.
Yeah, so the original plan versus what's there today will be very helpful and then we have to decide what's up and what isn't.
Well, you say what's there today.
No, that is, that is.
What is okay all the time.
Right.
It was a secret library, right?
Right. It's not, it's not suggested.
No, right. So, where are we right now?
We're, we're looking for the, we're looking for the original plan, right? Hey, what is this?
Can I back up with Steve's saying that I think we need a plan?
Yeah, I agree.
Of what they ultimately want to do? And that we would, that's what changes that have been made since the originals were built.
Well, this is a plan they were going to do. I was hoping that they would be able to explain the difference.
The paddies.
That was not.
Right. Paddies are not what they want to do.
And how does this compare to the original plan we approved back?
Right.
Can we use the patio as a question to turn back to Sarah, please, or Carol, sorry, Carol? And ask her, so this patio plan doesn't show the existing fire pit?
It doesn't.
So, are you taking the fire pit out?
No, so what happened was there was an original, of course, I wasn't involved, but there was an original plan and there was a patio area.
Yeah.
And then, the patio was built slightly bigger than what was approved. And, but not as big as originally. Because they originally came up with a patio plan and it was reduced. And the one that was actually done was slightly larger, but not that big. So, then, when I had gone to the town to help
Yeah.
after the problem already happened to conservation because the meeting was coming and I was told that was above the patio. And which, well, so I went to that meeting and they were looking at the patio because of the distance to the conservation.
That's all they care about. That's not what we care about.
And they said it was such a slight difference and it was on existing lawn, it would have been lawn anyway, that they approved it.
But again, that's.
Right, so I'm just saying, they approved it on their end.
Right, but that's, that's moved, really is moved at this point.
Well, it was their meeting.
Right, but we're now at this meeting. So, my question is, that shows a rectangle. The other plan shows a rectangle with a large circle at the top, which is a fire pit. The fire pit is a completely new feature and it's bigger. We want to know, and you're showing us this plan saying this is what you're going to do, but it doesn't right now correctly show the fire pit. So, are you taking the fire pit out or is this incomplete?
It's just.
No, so the, so the homeowner did send over a plan that shows the difference in square footage.
But that's not what we're looking at still. So, there's another plan.
Can we, can we actually get us a middle, a plan submittal that shows what's going to be there when the dust settles? Can we do that?
Exactly what's going to be there.
What's going to be there.
Then we have to compare with, not with this plan, but with the original plan we approved.
Original, right.
And then we have to decide which changes.
Which elements we're going to sign off?
Right.
Okay.
It's not.
Maybe all of them, maybe not. I don't know.
So, these are the two plans that can show exactly the difference. And, but the landscaper, that we had the estimate on, which I was told.
Are you hearing this? We're, we're saying this is what we need.
I think these were submitted before, ahead of time.
Yeah, but we need a coordinated, we don't need five drawings. We need a coordinated drawing that shows everything that's being proposed, including what's been built. And we need to compare it with what we signed off on before. It's that, that coordinated drawing. And we have to sign off on all of the items that are, that are different from what we originally signed off on.
And I understand, but when I went to the town to help the family, I was given three things to do. One and two were done, because I met with the town last week and I said they did the stormwater. They complied with the lights that I knew had to be replaced. And number three was the landscaping estimate. And we included absolutely every single tree and shrub that had to be put in, even if they'd already put some in because it hadn't been inspected. That's what I was told.
We're saying the same things over and over.
Right.
You said that.
We didn't know anything about the fact.
There's more that has to be done.
I was told that the patio was not an issue for tonight. But they have submitted this plan.
I never said that. I never said the patio was not an issue for tonight.
I was just, I asked for the three things we had to do and that wasn't one of them.
Yeah, the stormwater is part of the patio.
It's an issue where we asked the question and we see what works and what doesn't work. And right now, we don't have the right information to make any determination.
So, was the stormwater plan including the patio?
Yeah.
Oh, so that's.
That's what the stormwater, that's what it should include because it was more hard.
So, the stormwater plan.
What we need is a consolidated plan.
The stormwater plan was submitted.
We need a consolidated plan that shows what it's going to be, look like when, when it's finished. With the landscaping.
When she says plan, she needs to.
Is this not being built? Because it's not shown on that plan you just gave us. This. Is this not being built anymore?
I think that was created just to show the patio.
Okay.
But the stormwater plan was submitted by someone else and the town, it was.
All right, you know, I think it's pretty clear what needs to be done. You need to have a plan that shows what's already there and what's going to be there, if it's not already there, including every single shrub, every single, every single, we want everything that's shown on this plan. But, but one, again, that is what's proposed and what's already there. And then we will compare it with what we approved way back when, which is not this plan, and decide which of those changes we can live with, which may be all of them, I don't know.
So there's no change, because the estimate we gave, the only thing we need, the patio, the estimate that we gave from the landscaping company included everything on the original plan that you approved.
But we need a plan. We don't have a plan that shows what's.
Well, I think he did the estimate by the original plan.
This is not complete.
Okay, what, what needs to be done?
I need to see what's already done.
The patio isn't chartered, the, 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 the heifers aren't chartered. It just, it's not, it's not, it's not what you're, they're proposing to do.
They were gonna do exactly that.
Are they gonna take the neighbors?
But they didn't, but they didn't.
Are they gonna take the fire pit out?
No, because.
Well, this isn't, this isn't a hundred percent.
It would be if they had to.
There are probably other things that a lot of.
No, wouldn't be, there are other, there are other issues as well, like, well, what is?
What's all this? Is that coming out or not?
This isn't shown on the latest plan that we just saw a slide of a few minutes ago. None of this is shown on that plan.
Right.
Are you no longer proposing that?
It's not the actual floor, it's different from this plan, so like, the extended driveway is shown. Like, if it hasn't shown this one, we want to match up the other one, and they want that, whatever is planned, have a plan of that.
Wait a minute, don't do that. Wait, hold on, Dave, you're off base, don't do that, okay? This is a meeting, you're not talking with the applicants. I don't know, this, there's a process in this, okay? You, you talked to the, you talked to us and asked us if we have permission to talk to the applicants.
No, I was just trying to find out.
Yeah, I know what you're trying to do.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
We, we're, I think we've beaten this horse to death, we all agree, every one of us on the planning board know, we've explained it about five times. We know what we need to do, we're gonna continue until we get what we need to see, okay? And we, and we, and if, don't understand what that is, look at the tape, okay? So we'll continue to one date.
I think honestly, this has to go out at least on March twentieth.
Fine, we'll continue to March twentieth.
Okay.
There's miscommunication here, the board knows what we need to see. I don't know where the disconnect is. Look at the video, we explained it five times.
Or asking my.
Or asking my.
Very simple.
I, I did, and it was very simple. I was told that we needed an estimate.
So, then you can blame me, it wasn't enough, I thought you could give, that was, it's been a long process working with you folks to get the right information out. It's been more than a month of getting, to get the right information out. It's not enough, we'll get the right information out, okay? And it won't be back here until we get to that point.
And I did bring it down ahead of time.
Yeah.
We appreciate what you're trying to do, it's just not enough.
You're earnest, it's just, as I said, there's a mis, there's a miscommunication here. We have to go through a process where we look at it rationally, not in bits and pieces. Compare what was originally approved with totally a coordinated drawing, with what changes are gonna happen with the dust settles, and sign off on those, on those exact changes, and it needs to be a record drawing that, that exactly shows what's going to be there at the end of the day.
Those drawings are legal documents.
And that's the one that I got from the town. So that's the one we're going, that, this is the plan that was submitted.
Would you pass somebody a bunch of notes and say, in here is a legal document, really all of here somewhere? Or would you ask for a full organized report, a legal document, which says, this is the premise, this is what we did, this is why we did it, and this is where we end up, that's all we're asking for, in graphic form?
Okay, good. Okay.
All right, Ash and Wellesley?
On top of everything else, what I started.
Here's the space, sidewalk. Yep. Ashley Wellesley, Steve has requested that, to defer that decision, because they are looking at proximity of the sidewalk to the road, so they wanna have some time to.
This is also, that you should look at the Wellsley streets, but not the Ash Street.
So Wellesley Street, they still did wanna look at?
Yeah.
But I, since we got that email yesterday, I don't have time to, I didn't have time to prepare decisions solely on that.
Okay.
So I told them we wouldn't do anything tonight, but at next meeting, I'll have a decision just for Wellesley.
Okay, good.
And then Leslie and I are gonna go look at that tree.
Right, and I also wanna do, talk about the fence and the, and the, and the fence teeth, I guess that's the Wellsley street.
That's the Wellsley street one, if you wanna talk about it, I'll leave that to you, if you wanna talk about it now, or if you wanna talk about.
I don't know, I don't know how much.
Let me just say that what we agreed to at the last meeting.
Yeah, I watched.
Okay, well, well, one of our conditions is gonna be that, that our, our decision is subject to signing off on whatever the, the configuration, the gated opening is.
Right, and I just wanted, and I, because like, whatever Tony drew, you couldn't see on video. So I just wanted to, you know, ask a question, and this goes back to that scribble I did.
Yeah.
And we have.
Tony, when you go look at the tree, are you also gonna measure the distance between the tree and the road?
Yes.
Is this the tree that we're thinking?
The tree that you thought you could navigate around.
The oak tree, so I agree with you, I looked it around, I was going ad void, you know.
Well, no, you, maybe you should explain Steve Fox's email, because it's not just the, it's just, not just that one tree, there, there are also, why don't you explain what you got?
So they also, they're also looking to get an arborist report for this.
Good, they're just.
Both trees.
For all the affected trees, so that's all three of them.
Right, including the pine tree.
Including the pine, including the large double pine, including the smaller double pine, and the oak tree.
Right.
I'd like to say the oak.
Not just the oak tree, okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, good, I just wanted everybody to be clear on that.
What I think Tony's talking about is just measuring the distance, because no one did tape measure when he did.
Right, from the oak tree to the road.
Exactly, the base of the tree and the, and the tree.
Right.
See what you really have.
Yeah, some actual dimensions.
The oak itself.
Yeah.
I mean, here, it is if you wanna look at it. No vertical color, forty mile an hour speed limit, and vapor custody and arborists to certify the condition of the trees in question. So, that's where they wanna look at it in the future meeting.
Right.
So, so we can look at Wellesley, we'll look at just the Wellesley decision at the next meeting, defer the rest of this.
Is, is it really worth separating this into two decisions rather than waiting, you know, till the meeting after the next meeting, I mean, it seems kind of.
Is there a rush to do the construction work on this, it's, it's February.
That was what Khan Khan had expressed to me, that they would, if they can, they would like, they would like to get moving on the legacy trail part of it, and they were gonna put up separate bids for that.
Okay, so they wanna send out bids?
Yes.
Okay. So, when we talk about the Wellesley Street opening, I, I think the proper time to do that, to, to talk about your thoughts on what that configuration looks like.
Yes.
Is when we look at the decision.
Okay.
And, and I assume someone will be here on behalf of the, of the legacy trail people to, that we can talk to.
If we're gonna talk about the S, then I'll ask for someone to be here.
And so have you been able to by miracle, get ahold of Chief Swords to set something up, or is that their, or components?
Well, he's already agreed sixteen feet.
He has agreed, so he didn't mention that.
Excellent, yeah.
And then attach that to the part.
Yeah, no, no, that's.
Sixteen feet is great, love it.
What was the mitigating factor that produced it from eighteen sixteen? Um, he said he would, he wanted it to be eighteen, but in the interest of keeping the project moving, he'll work with sixteen.
Did he try fourteen?
No. No, he did not try fourteen after that.
You don't have a suicidal.
Sorry, what's that?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, my territory of, of, of the pitch, which I can see, but they talked a bit about the change that was now gonna take place, they were either reducing it with, but also, it's interesting, they wanted to save those particular heads to stone, the big sharp ones, and run them back, along to take, it would be further back.
And it's like this, yeah, I don't know.
It's still your thunder.
Eight, sorry, I'll just, I'll just take a little rumble, I'll say.
Well, Leslie drew that.
No, it's one of those great minds saying alike.
Leslie, can you see this, Sue?
She can't see that, that's really scary, oh my word.
Now that's documented.
It's independent.
Yeah, it must be right, it must be right, there you go.
Sources, okay, so we'll, we'll talk about that when we talk about the draft decision.
Regarding planning work position, you guys thought that, right? They're talking a lot about how these things are not possible.
Wait, which ones?
Regarding planning work position, and this is a very, you know, a very commanding of an email straight from Eli, I am putting, like, a lot of a lot, there's no issues, and we pretend on Wednesday, we let it out, and then they answered back from Tyler, and where it's in.
Oh, okay, you're talking, okay, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, I do have one talking about, and it's a really extensive.
It's this email, and what, what Sue is looking at is all of these other preceding emails before Steve asks to defer.
Okay.
That's.
Who's questioning?
The project engineers.
As far as our request or other people's requests?
So, no, not as, as far as, far as this design, basically, like, possibility of moving the oak sidewalk behind the oak tree.
They're, they're, they're doing the, okay, they're, got it. I mean, one thing is, that we talked about on the sidewalk, was the way they're dealing with that culvert, that path over the culvert.
Yeah, I heard you talk about that, yeah.
Right, and how they're dealing with like, the regular DPW, where you see, you know, metal pipe sticking up? And I asked, is Howard's tree speaking, however it goes, does the gentleman like, does they have a better looking detail for that? And he said he was gonna come up with one, he said, probably.
What they said to us at the meeting was that it's now gonna be a series of, it's not just one, one culvert, it's gonna be a series of smaller pipes, if, if we're talking about the same thing.
I think where, where the, where the pat, the stone wall, they've done that swale. Swale, by the way, has a, has horrible, it looked, swale was not attractive.
No?
No, and it has netting on it, and I think it can be bettered. And the culvert that was described to me, and I thought I heard on the tape, was that it was gonna be, whether it's a series of pipes or metal pipes, if you're gonna see metal pipes, and it's gonna be more practical than it is aesthetic. And we have a discussion, can we come up with a detail that they're using some kind of a stone to hide the pipes, or something more appealing? And I don't know where that went, and I think the, the project engineer named Mike.
Steve.
Steve, sorry, twelve, there he goes. He said he would look and, and see what they had, because they, they have had projects where they have to do this.
He didn't, he didn't present anything specific to that.
No, he didn't, and I, I know, and I, I was, you know, unfortunately, I wasn't here, I couldn't draw his memory.
But also, look, look down, and some of his bullets, you know, have a really very current, and that, that, what's definitely part of the center. Therefore, protection requirement cannot be met in the use, because they're putting a lot of copyouts in, out of what I'm seeing.
Yeah, we should look at that.
This is the clear, that, that's a, that's a true. Yeah, but we, we must think that deals with that.
So they, they read it carefully, or they're listening carefully, but there's some things we need to have our, you know, answers placed for.
And seventy-five percent is interesting, if you can make seventy-five percent, are you gonna make fifty, or are you gonna make ten?
Yeah, yeah, but also, they have the protection fence, can't be that, that, so I guess that, don't, protection fence, I mean, there's a lot of.
No, in this, in what we usually, what we run into the standard is that you would do it then at the limit of work, similar to what we said at the Concord Railroad parking.
So we just.
You know what would be interesting, is they're hiring an arborist to look at the trees that they're considering taking down. If they would have the arborist look at those trees where they can't avoid the critical root zone, that would be interesting. And see what they say about what's the risk of those trees of construction so close to, and non-protection. So, as, as long as the arborist is there, say, hey, there are three more trees to look at.
Yeah.
Use their expertise.
That'll save another month, right, of us asking him to go back and take a look at those trees that are a risk. I mean, it is a nature trail, is that right, and nature has trees, it'd be nice to get the trees.
He also says, you know, he said, this is to do with the bit, I just don't know if it's a, we, or.
Mow down all the trees to greet the tree. Into his bit, yeah.
So, this is why, I mean, this is, you know, it's reasonable that they need to know from the constitution, so I think we're gonna be there to, to let some of these go, or stand up and protect.
Well, one of this is CYA stuff.
Well, yeah, I'm sure it is, but.
We need to do a type, and it's expensive work.
A bit, but then, we can't come back to say, hey, you did your right side, and if you go over, definitely in a bit, you can get it. You know, we pulled that out early on, so we can call CYA, but for some of it, but I would like that we, what we can actually, absolutely, immediately now, and we could let go.
Well, I, I think, I think Sue's right, because this way, they have a disclaimer, they can say, we told you we couldn't do it, and we're not gonna do it. And since the terms are vague.
Well, Sue, we've been, there are several issues here, as I understand it, we, we were down to two trees. We were down to the oak tree, and we were down to the, to the white pine tree. And so, we're only talking about one tree. As we, we said, we were okay with removing the oak tree, although not everybody thought that was the greatest decision in the world. Yeah, so I don't, I, I don't know why we're getting, you know, I, I don't think we should get overly anxious about, about one tree.
I don't.
But, you know, it's, it, I, I know that Mitch is making a big deal out of it, but it's, it's a tree.
Can I just go back, I don't think it's one tree, I think this goes back to the whole project, they're now reneging on a lot of the standards, planning for, put together on the whole project.
The other trees now.
It's all the other trees that we thought were safe, or could be handled in an intelligent, thoughtful manner.
What other trees? I thought we were.
Wherever the path was going.
What we looked at was just two trees. If it's not in the right of way, we have no jurisdiction.
But the trees, which we do have in the right of way, there are other ones, which they're missing, which we said they could miss, now they're saying, we, we're not sure we can.
Well, that's not what they said at the presentation.
What, what?
They said that the presentation. Val was with that lime system.
No, I know, but that's not what they said at the presentation.
Right, so the question is.
So something.
Yeah, that's what she's pointing out, that there's all this back, backroom stuff.
But this is, this doesn't have to do with the planning board's conditions, well, when they made the presentation last week, it was down to, they, everything looked fine, at least that's what they presented to us, except there were two trees that were in question, that oak tree and the pine tree.
Yeah, but we're saying there are other trees in our jurisdiction that are at risk because of this project.
Where?
They never, the other, only other trees I'm aware of were trees that were not in good shape, and we said, okay, those could go. I don't know of any other trees.
But we talked, we did talk about ones working their way, will go to this side of this tree, and outside of that tree. So my question to them, and I'll just ask, given this email, or any of the trees in the way they're laying, we're not gonna comply with the requirements of the planning board, seventy-five percent, you know, fence and the bit, and then, and then, and all the roof digging, tell us.
Just need clarification.
I mean, by, by putting us on this thread, we're nervous.
When, when we looked at the, at the layout, the side, the walk, the sidewalk layout, the, the only two trees that were, that, that were close to the pavement, to the walkway pavement, were the two we discussed. So.
Well, Leslie, I'll look at.
Are we looking now at a whole bunch of trees that we didn't review?
We'll go walking.
That's great, why are we giving clarification of?
I don't know.
Well, there was one at least right here that I know we brought up.
Yeah, there were a couple.
Where the gate crossing was, there was a big.
That one was gonna, that one, they, they, they told us, they could, they could save that tree.
Yeah, they could, they could.
They told us they can save that tree, we didn't tell them.
No, we didn't tell them to save this one, this one they said they missed, but this is an example of one where you do want the protection around it.
Right.
They're not gonna be able to do seventy-five percent, and I think we all understood that, that it was gonna be close, but they would do the other measures, such as air spading, and doing this, doing, you know, the clean cuts on the roots. And my request is for them to have an arborist look at that.
Right, and establish a level.
Have a level of confidence that that tree can be saved with their plans now.
So.
I have to assume that's what the arborist is gonna do.
No, no, the arborist wasn't gonna look at, the arborist is gonna look at the conditions of the trees that were under debate about ten years ago.
With two trees, that was his, that's gonna be his job, and by the way, typically, arborists, if you ask them, should we take this tree down or not, ninety-nine percent of the time, they say it's fine to take the tree down.
Well, it's also fine to leave it up, too.
They don't wanna be held liable.
That's right, it's all about CYA.
Yeah.
So.
Yes, we have.
I just, I don't know.
Can't you unblunder?
I don't know why, why are we so anxious, I, I just don't.
We're anxious, because they brought up a concern that there were trees, because they said were gonna be protected, that are not gonna be protected.
Okay.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Tony and Leslie have.
Volunteered.
Yeah, we'll walk it, and we'll. Yeah, we'll walk it and we'll graciously volunteer, take a look, so, let's go from there.
Gonna be the best, be the planning board mascot.
Okay.
And now we have two thirty-five walls, history, especially from the day camp.
Yeah, just for day camp now.
It's the decision.
Yep.
I'm moved.
I'm moved, it's incredible, because there are cars on the bus.
Is it that bad?
It was freezing rainy, it was freezing rainy when I walked in.
We don't know, it was, it was thorny when I walked in.
I was wondering like how the, she's back in.
I think the parking lot's.
Even for you, it's.
Maybe the police can give us a ride home and pick up our cars tomorrow.
Right there, yeah, that was it.
Were those the comments in the annual report back to you, the two lakes?
No, we'll do it tonight, that's what I wanted to do tonight.
Okay. Because basically my, my term ended last two years ago, I thought that was great.
Oh, did I not?
I thought I wasn't gonna correct.
It was two thousand thirteen instead of twenty-three.
If wishes were horses, right?
Oh, yeah.
These are all standard, these are all standard conditions.
No, they're all standard conditions, the only one that changes in this one is the two-year term instead of three.
Okay.
Because they, he announced his plans to grow the camp.
Right.
So even the CCs are standard conditions?
Yeah. Yeah, when we do the camps, because they're such shorter things, we don't really have special conditions for the camps, we just do a set of, like, I think it's like eight or so standard conditions.
Do we get some flexibility to move up from thirty, or?
Yep.
We did know your, there is a set of campers, yeah. If they, when they come back to us, right?
Yeah.
Uh, greater than a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's in by.
Who's stopping you?
Hey, did you see that David Ortiz is speaking in Regis?
Somebody, I heard somebody say that today.
Everything's happening in Regis.
Okay, guys.
All right, done.
So odd wording there at number seven.
This is, this camp has almost no impact, I think, so.
But increase.
Wait, 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 stop. Tony has come.
Sure. Page six, number seven, odd wording, of an increase in by greater than a hundred percent?
Of an increase in campers, yeah, they're, we're missing a word there.
Okay, in campers, yeah, right.
Just a minute.
She's trying to.
Yeah, 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 is how warm is it where you are?
Yeah. She's cruel.
That's kind of the only variable in the whole thing, isn't it?
What's that, the?
That little.
That line, yeah.
Yeah.
Two years.
And where's, this is the two years we're talking about.
Initial period of two years, yeah.
All right, go ahead. Second.
On paper.
Aye.
All right, unanimous, not opposed?
Puzzled.
All right, annual report review.
Annual report review.
It's perfect.
I think it's, it's great.
It looked really good, I didn't quite follow by.
That Wasland's last year was two thousand thirteen.
I thought that was perfect, man, I applaud you, Eman, I applaud you all the time, but now.
I'm trolling. Oh, you don't like that font? Carol will adjust that. Yeah.
There, there should be.
Yeah, that's, that's easy enough to change, I think.
Squeers, make them squeers.
Ultimately.
That's the old usual alternative.
Is reengage on the hyphen? Does reengage on the hyphen?
Where are we looking, sorry?
Affordable housing.
Either way.
Okay.
It could either be hesitated or not.
In the second paragraph, there's an as for by its lonely, in September, maybe the.
Second paragraph from which page, sorry?
There is no page number, one, two, this one, affordable housing.
Okay.
Yeah, and under affordable housing, the second paragraph, there's missing a.
Oh, in September eight.
Is that what it is, okay.
Yeah, it should be eight.
And then, in the third paragraph, has engaged to U two, has engaged U two, no two.
Mike, I just had to generally, when you go through the list, you have different punctuation at the end, and sometimes you put periods, sometimes you add a colon, sometimes you put in nothing, so if you could just make it consistent.
Is Westboro G H or a O?
You know, I usually see it as R O.
Really?
Yeah, it's the same, you say when you like, you see Foxborough, the older signs have it as O U G H, and then the older signs have it as R O.
Yeah, I know. As, as older people remembered, it's a G H.
Yeah.
Everybody else just dropped it, we don't wanna deal with it.
Danny, you worked in Foxborough, which is it?
I think it goes either way, honestly, I think we did O R O more often than not.
Than not.
We reduced that from one fourteen to twenty-one.
We see that.
For the trail, um, for the very sidewalks? Yeah, that was the highest number, if you remember, they came back with that, with that arborist report, that was just like, so many trees done.
What happened to the very sidewalk, they've never got done?
So they hit a speed bump.
Yeah, the culvert, actually.
It's gonna be done this coming year.
Well, they also have to deal with the redo of the existing, they just don't, have you seen anything back from that one, by the way?
Yeah, so they're. No, we did the sidewalk on that, but I haven't, I haven't seen the plan back.
Because, yeah, because they're gonna do more than just repaving, so it has to come back to this committee.
If they, if they take out trees or stone walls, then yes, it does.
What about regrading?
Regrading doesn't have to come back to us.
Doesn't have to be done?
Just, just stone walls, and as we walked it, now, this is just the walk, you know, when you look at it, the plan was to not take out any of the stone walls or, or trees, and by and large, it's not a lot of trees in that right of way already, because the sidewalk's there.
Right, but for instance, one of the places where it's gonna be tied, this is a hairpin right where it goes, uh, right here, um, is how thought raidal, raidal. And near two sixty-one, the, uh, one of the historic houses, I'm afraid of the, how much space are gonna be taken away? So I, I guess what I would, we just need to do is take a look.
Okay.
That's it, but never mind, never mind.
Hey, just, just as a general question, this is under continuing activities, just because this is, you speak to me, so when you can fill out a PDF application online, it's a bit, is that called a fillable PDF application?
It is, yes.
Okay, so then you truly don't have to be printed and filled out by hand and then scanned and then or emailed or anything back in, it's all done online?
It's not all done electronically, but instead of having to come in and pick up a piece of paper from, from the, um, from the counter, fill that out by hand, those forms are now online, there's a field where you have to fill, where you can type in everything on the, on the application, so you can type in applicant, property and all of that, then that gets printed and comes in.
And you print it out and then sign it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Or sign it, or?
Yeah, well, basically you just sign it and bring it in, they have to bring in checks anyway, and so.
Okay, oh, all right, oh, so that's really great, so, so you don't have to deal with eligible handwriting?
Yes.
How nice is that? Well, that's.
Tell me what stuff.
Sounds like what you did, you took them, I think it's only by law minimum.
Yeah. Yeah. It's only by law minimum, Article twenty.
Oh, here it is. That was it. Is it two thousand eighteen?
Yeah, that was.
But it was just big. Fuck, okay. Maybe he's including it for the question now.
That's what I'm. Okay.
Eman, is it possible to raise the thing up so we could keep reading?
Don't worry, Janet, there.
That's perfect, thank you.
Oh, no, doesn't. So the, you were saying the dates didn't line up on the.
Well, on, I mean, I'm just looking at the electronic, online, you know, they're, they're sort of, you know, sometimes they just are not all aligned evenly, like to the left or to the right, they're just.
Pretty good in the place that I'm.
Yeah, on the print, it's.
The paper is aligned.
We're gonna copy what's good, Sue.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just wanna know, my lovely, and I, maybe, Leslie, you wanna use your middle initial too? I mean, I kinda like the Alfred Delgate a lot, and Stephen R. Oppenheimer, maybe I, Anthony, maybe you need your middle initial?
Are you? Oh, do you, if you're fucking.
I actually have one.
Oh, okay.
How many, how many do you want to? Yeah, just put an A.
Okay.
I have a, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, for, for eighteen skating pond, does, does that back onto twenty, or do they have the other lot?
What?
For eighteen skating pond, does that back up to Route twenty, or is it, there's a lot that?
There's a separate lot.
So we don't have to move on it, because it's a great floor, right?
No, you don't have to move on it.
No, it's just a, yeah.
This is just, you know, review for consistency, we got here what you guys wanna get in for the.
It looks great, it looks really good.
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay. I'll scan it.
Yeah, I'm not quite, I'm just trying to find title something, is it, we're going to discuss.
If you see anything, it's more than a typo, just, you can come back though. Minutes?
Minutes, I know that Steve has reviewed ten seventeen, and he gave me just two edits, which I've done, so, I don't know.
I know that we approved the minutes, ten seventeen, eighteen, that's state.
Both ten.
Ten seventeen, you got it.
Raw, I, I checked it.
Aye.
Okay, nice.
Okay, good, and ten three?
Ten three, I haven't completed yet.
Okay. Tom Planner report.
So, okay, Tom Planner report, there's a couple things I want to touch, I think we covered this, um, February twelfth. Next Tuesday is our River School site visit for the new field.
And where can we meet, I thought you got confused.
Um, so right as you come in off of, um, off of Winter, just kind of across from Vogel, the school, you can pull, it circulates one direction around, basically clockwise, first parking lot, park over there, because that's where the new field is going.
Okay. At eight fifteen?
At eight fifteen, yes, so we missed the pickup and drop off traffic.
I told you.
Yes, you did tell me, yeah. On February nineteenth, we have another site visit at five, at Five Colchester, what I wanna point out is Five Colchester doesn't exist, doesn't address yet, that's the one we just assigned it yet. So if you look on my board, it's not there, it's the corner of Colchester and Conant Street.
It was zero.
It was zero Conant, yeah. And then the following week after that, one forty-six Conant site visit, so that's just a block up from there. And then our regular meeting is February twenty-seventh. An update on Metro Common here, um, again, that's the M A P C's regional long range plan. The next listening session on February twenty-eighth is gonna be, you can drop in anytime between three to eight, it's a very advanced call. This is the one that's specially designated for Metro West, for our region, for our subregion. These are.
What's the listening set?
That's basically, they do all sorts of, um, they take input in a bunch of ways, like one of them is this thing that I've put up here, is, you can kind of give your vision for the year twenty fifteen, if you wanna fill those out, and, and give them to me, I'll take them to that listening session, I'm gonna go to that. So, you can give them to me, like.
This is transportation based, or this is?
It's, it is land use based, it is economic development based, it is all that it, that they cover.
So this is the state listening to the communities, is that, is that where the listening comes in?
Yes, yeah.
And this includes things like, it's also vulnerability, because it's a stable committee.
Yeah, vulnerable, yeah, yeah. So that's the other thing, you know, we tell other committees about, as they're interested about this event.
We'll do.
So, um, following up on what Tony and I were working on with traffic planning, we've, um.
I didn't see that, that was a three.
We've put up this, this that is taking a long time to load, but we've started a little blog discussion on.
Oh, good.
Anyway, just take my word for it, we put it out there. This is something really, I wanted to share with you folks, as part of the Metro Common, they do have a speaker series, so they bring in various, you know, planning thinkers, experts from around the country. This fellow, Richard Rothstein, wrote this book, The Color of Law, and this is about, um, and I did buy his book there, I do think it was really good and worthwhile, so if anybody wants to read it, I have it. It is about basically how racial segregation has been encouraged and, and continues throughout, basically through today, and it was in a large way a more intentional act than we think. It's, it's a challenging way to think about our land use, and if you can, please do look at some of these interviews or read the book, I think it's, it's worth, it's very worthwhile. Some of the things we have upcoming for the legislature, Phil Saunders has asked that we again support the Public Lands Preservation Act, and we did support this last year, district global technical assistance funding, that is money that M A P C gets to do technical assistance projects for various towns right now. That funding is funding our water master plan, um, usage analysis, so we probably wanna support that again.
When Tony asked, not facetiously, are there safe routes for trains, is there any way we can put some kind of a bug in somebody's ear that's?
Yes.
Helps some of the logarithms you guys are talking about?
Yes, we can, so, a few inputs on that is, you know, Metro Common is one, we wanna, we wanna put that kind of transportation in there. Destination twenty forty is the N P O's regional plant, um, that's their long range plan, we wanna put that in there. Senator Spilka is forming herself a transportation committee, um, that she wants to head up in this session of the legislature. That, as we talked about, you know, one of the things Tony and I brought up, is there's a lot of these diverse plans, that's a good place where I think that somebody could kind of centralize those, because it is at the senate lawmaker funding level, that they could take up that role. And, yes, I think that should be brought up there as well, too.
Does that mean it goes on your long, long, long list?
Mm-hmm, it goes on the, that goes on the. Neighborhood, ongoing projects imperments, seven fifty-one, seven sixty-one, Boston Closewater, that forty B, we did receive the notice of intent to convert off of the sixty-one A lands. So, that means that they've, they've taken one more official step to, to actually selling that property. We don't have to comment on it, but we should note that we received it here. We usually, the only time we would comment is if we've said, no, try and buy that land, or that, selectmen are gonna review this on the twelfth.
When are we gonna see the project, proposed project?
The proposed project, um.
Well, there is no proposed.
Yeah, there is no proposed project as of yet, and I'm trying to remember where.
It's not in a project today.
Yeah, we did, the last thing we laid out the timeline was that they were going to do that, and then, um, and once that they got past this point, then they would finalize their P N S, and then we would start seeing it, that's where I remember it being left, but we did not have a definite date when we.
Definitely months away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Boston Properties, we're gonna begin neighborhood meetings, um, next week, on the eleventh will be our first one, the following ones will be probably after school break. Five eighteen South Avenue, this is, this is a new proposal. Five eighteen South Avenue, this is, this is a new proposal that has just been presented publicly to the Affordable Housing Trust.
It's forty B?
It is going in as a forty B as a rental. The number he mentioned there was two hundred, two hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy-five acres. It is, that's...
How many acres?
Yeah.
How many acres?
Ten. Ten acres, half of it being...
Where did this come from?
It's on, about four acres.
Yeah.
Is it mostly wetlands, is that...
Half of it is wetlands.
It's sort of new.
It's, yeah.
And who's doing this?
Early.
Jonathan Buckman owns it, and he has partnered, he's partnered with a large developer.
And Jonathan Buckman just bought it, or was he always owned it?
No, he just bought it.
Is, is access to it and traffic as much of an issue as seven fifty-one, seven sixty-one?
It's on Route thirty, so it...
It's close to Wilson Street.
Yeah.
Wilson Street, isn't it?
Yeah.
Wow, really?
Yeah, and his access is...
It's family housing, so we're looking at at least one point five, maybe one point seven five per square foot unit.
And there's individual houses or townhouses?
It's going to be, it's going to be...
It's got to be, it's got to be like a big apartment block.
It's a four...
No, that's why I'm wondering.
To build it.
It's going to be three stories?
But it's, oh, it's, my guess is closer to six or seven.
They were saying four, but it's...
Do you think they're open to... Do you think they're open to building fewer? Because maybe with a combination of Boston Properties, seven fifty-one, seven sixty-one, and five eighteen...
We haven't seen it. We don't...
We'd like them all to be smaller.
Yeah.
We need to get a comprehensive permit.
Spread it around.
Yeah. Fairly. What we're looking at now would be somewhere between seven hundred and fifty and eight hundred affordable housing units, under consideration.
But in order to, in order to...
That's the real...
Yeah, a lot. Well, way too much, but if we can get them to reduce their...
Well, what you need to do is get a comprehensive permit in place, because at that point, we have a two-year hiatus.
Yeah.
And then the rent is built, and then that's it.
Let's look at the second floor.
Yeah, so that, that makes, this is, this property, this project is closest to getting a compromise. They submitted for a compromise there already before the ZBA, with that...
Can we, does ZBA expedite this?
We don't know yet.
Maybe we can, can we request?
I mean...
One committee to another?
We can request, I mean, I think it's a larger town-wide discussion to have, that, you know, it's...
Yeah.
We, you know, obviously, I think we want to endorse that. We see, we see the issue, you know, but it has to come, you know, selectmen, I believe they see the issue too, but, you know, they have to say it to...
There are pieces attached to that.
Yeah.
Always are.
It's not just, it's not just the forty B, it's a permit. Multiple moving parts there.
Yeah, yeah.
Moving over moving parts.
Yeah, it is... Yeah, we've, an onslaught has come to us now, and we have to, we have to find our best way to manage this. And that's, that's going to be a challenge. Okay.
It's not like we didn't think this would happen.
No, actually.
We heard from the rail show, if there's any other committee updates that we want, that anyone has to give?
Town center plans are being...
Um, I saw you guys forwarded my memo.
We did?
It wasn't meant for that, but, okay, so it goes. My real concern is the irrigation system and the town well and all of that. I mean, they have both the comment in there that says, water everything from a truck, and then they have four thirty pages of this, how you do the irrigation system. And if they do an irrigation system, they don't have a well. So I'm hoping they're going to water by the truck and not to the irrigation system. But if they are doing an irrigation system, they're going to do a well, they have to do a well, and the memo doesn't deal with that.
It's not my memo, no, it's...
What did he say?
He said, we're going to hook up the...
Well, we didn't care for that. So that's why that was a memo to us versus, versus TPC committee, this is our recommendation, request, whatever the right word is.
That'll be good.
So I don't know, has that gone to Steve or Rob?
Yes.
And have we received anything back?
We have not received it.
When did it go to?
Basically, two weeks ago now, roughly.
Can you reach out to him and see what the status of that is? Because I think the real concern is that, is that one right there. You know, that, you know, it's either, it should be either a well or, we also said they don't need it, and they agreed they didn't need it, and they have wording in there saying they need it, so...
Well, this ties back to two committees, the Sustainability Committee.
Right, but they're just, they're still, right, but they're also, you have to remember, they're pretty fledgling.
Yeah, no, I understand, but the other one is the water policy.
It was water policy?
No?
Exactly, so there, that's, selectmen, I think, so there's a... This is also, this is also money-saving.
I think that's why I should work on it from the water policy side.
And it's also money-saving, too.
Isn't that a very good example, so?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly what it says.
We formed this giant committee.
Yeah, I'd agree with you. I'd like to see them run it off a well.
So I think we need, I think we need to ask Steve to, let us know where it's going and do something to that.
Yeah, let's get a reporter asking him those questions.
Can you imagine it would be that difficult, because after all, it's actually a stream?
It's definitely, it's...
Yes, it's an underground stream.
What, is the town green watered?
No.
No, it's not, it's not watered, but...
It's pretty wet.
It was a stream.
It's always soaking, yeah.
Yes.
There must be water, it's still...
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know.
Yeah, the drains, if it goes somewhere, yeah.
That's what I would say. By the way, sustainability is chasing a number of different, um, grants right now, and it's going to be reaching out to different departments and different committees, so be there.
Okay, so we scheduled, we scheduled something for that, too. Okay. All right.
That's it?
That is it for...
Thank you. I'm sure that we adjourned.
Okay.